I want to thank Lauren Dravel tonight for passing out lots and lots of flyers for tonight's meeting. So, thank you Lauren. And a special thanks to the Conifer Area Council Board of Directors for actually sponsoring tonight. Usually we have another sponsor, but we wanted to sponsor tonight. It's a very special night because we're dedicating the meeting to Dan Ewing and extraordinary volunteer. So, tonight's kind of dedicated to Dan. As most of you know, most of you have seen before, Conifer Area Council is a non-political, nonprofit organization that does not support or oppose any development issue, political agenda, individual person, or business. We've asked all of our speakers to include these values in their presentations and to be non-partisan, non-controversial, and to present just the facts. We also ask that you represent these values and there will be no campaign or signing of petitions at the meeting. Also, there will be no questions or comments during the presentations. That way, we can get through a lot of information. And then about 8:00, you will have a chance to ask any questions that you might have. You might notice, any of you, that Angela Bassam is not holding the time cards tonight. She's been quite sick and had some other things going. So, Suzie Nelson, another board member, will be in the back with her little time cards to keep everybody on track. So, what's going on around here? First of all, Steve Harrelson is normally here from CDOT. He had another meeting tonight. He'll definitely be here in November. But he said there's not a whole lot going on with CDOT right now, except that Shaffer's Crossing was repaved yesterday and a radar speed sign and delineator posts in the median will be installed shortly. So, that intersection will be improved. And now, I'd like to ask Erica Armstrong, CAC Board Member, to come up and give a little update about the development going on up here.
Alright, so there is only just a couple of commercial development updates. If you have one meeting, you came in the door, they're also listed here. We're just trying to keep you informed of what's going on for applications in the community. The most important one, evening. Tonight, John Riddell is going to be presenting information about the community survey. That information is going to be blended into the meeting on the 25th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Conifer Community Church. So, maybe you took that community survey, then took those results, discussed it with the county commissioners, and then I indulged for the community. That information is on the very back page. Then, commercial developments. There's only two new applications. The first one was denied. It was for the TriStar Office Protocol Development Plan. That was on Main Street. And the second one is still in discussion on the Island Gold Road. It's a meeting to discuss the possible reserving to allow for up to 22 single-family residential lots and a recreational facility. And they have Ski Hill listed there, so we're trying to find out what's going on with that. They're having a public meeting on September 22nd at the Inner Canyon Firehouse. So, we should have a little more information at the next meeting. The other updates are, there's been a change over the Clifton House, if you know where that is, right at 285. They're now using it as a private K-38 school. And the Compassionate Dharma Monastery, they got rezoned from A2 to P2 to allow for overnight states of congregation. So, that's it for the updates. If you want any more information about the stuff that we put in here, you can also find more details. If you look at the very back page of the website, you can go to it's planning.jeffco.us. So, when you see those little yellow signs on your neighbor's property, you want to find out about it, you can just go there and find out what they're trying to do with the property change. That's it for tonight.
Thank you Erica. Okay, there's not much going on around here about RTD also. But Bruce wanted us all to know, obviously, that the big news is the recent opening of Denver Union Station. So, if anybody gets a chance, go down there and see it. It's pretty cool. Like I said, there's nothing too much going on around here. Maybe at the November meeting, he'll have an update. And now, we're going to have Sharon Trope talk just a minute about the Conifer Area Chamber and what's going on there. Sharon?
Thank you Shirley. Hello, everyone. How are you tonight? Excellent. Alright, so we have a few events going on that I hope that you can put in your calendar and attend. The first one is our 5th Annual Octo Beer Fest. It will be this Thursday at Brooks Place Tavern from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And it will feature 15 breweries with at least two beers each to try. The cost is $25, and you can get your tickets right now either at Brooks Place Tavern or Moore's Evergreen Autobody, or at Biggie's Liquor, or you can get them at the event with walking in the door if they still have some space left. We're hoping it's going to be great weather so we can be outside on the patio. Next, we have, this is actually organized by Lauren Dravel, again with the Conifer Area Council, 25 Quarter Cash Mom on Friday, September 19th. So, if you could make it to Stage Door Theater to see their funny hilarious play, "Dearly Departed", and then head over to Colorado's Best Beers, which is the bar that's in with the Denver Zip Line Adventures, they're going to stay open a little late for us so that we can hang out and kind of get to know each other. If you can't make that, there is also a classical concert at Conifer Community Church that night. And it will be featuring a classical pianist named Roger Gruba. He'll be playing Bach, Brahms, and Beethoven for the evening. And then you can head over to Colorado's Best Beers after that starts at 7:30. On Wednesday, September 24th, there's another 25 Quarter Cash Mom starting at 3:30 in the afternoon. And this one's in Mountain Books, so if you haven't stopped by to see Jesse, please pop in. He's a wonderful resource, carries a lot of local authors. So, you can head there and then stop next door after that to Pies by Bakers, which is a new place that just opened. They've got coffee, pies, cookies, and this is a great place to hang out. Where Monroe's used to be. Monroe's, the old Italian restaurant that was really good. Next, Public Affairs Committee of the Conifer Chamber. We have scheduled the Jefferson County Commissioner candidates and the Jefferson County Sheriff's candidates to come up and answer a series of questions and be open and available for questions from you. On October 6th, starting at 6:00 PM at the Elk Creek Fire Station on Long Blackwood Road. And they'll each have about 45 minutes, so we'll go till about 8:00 that night. And then, holiday wine tasting for the future is on Saturday, November 22nd. And that's at the Evergreen Memorial Bar. And it's going to be all day. We'll have silent auction open. And then, starting at 4:30, we'll have our deck and desserts, holiday wine tasting, and festival treats. I hope you can make it, because it's always a magical evening. And then, last but not least, our Conifer Christmas Parade is on December 6th. And it will be a theme of Around the World this year. So, we're looking forward to having a lot of floats, having our Christmas markets again, and hopefully have some fun games for the kids as well. So, I hope you can make it. Thanks.
Thanks Sharon. You know, it was Around the World about 25 years ago, or something like that. Because my kids, I actually pulled a float with about 25 kids. They were all dressed in Around the World costumes, so they had all these gray costumes. It was really fun. What comes around goes around, I guess. Okay, next is a legislative update. And we couldn't get our legislators again here tonight. They either have classes or something going. Elections, obviously, are coming up quickly. So, you'll need to kind of figure out who you're going to be voting for there. Last week, the Oil and Gas Panel was appointed and they had their first meeting. So, that's going to be a big topic for this coming year. Oil and gas will probably be the predominant issue for this coming year. Okay, next, we have John Riddell, another Conifer Area Council Board Member, who is going to be talking a little bit about the Conifer Community Survey and the findings that we have come up with. So, John?
Thank you Shirley. Hello, everybody.
Hi, John.
Come on now. How many want to here get a sneak peek at our survey findings? Well, we did a survey in April of May. It's something that we do about every four years. And this year, though, the survey was conducted for kind of a very special reason. And that is that the county is updating our Conifer Community Plan. You probably are aware of this. This is our Conifer Community Plan. And they are editing and updating. And we wanted to make sure that we had strong input into that plan in terms of what Conifer residents need, what they like, and what they don't like. And so, that is the main reason we did the survey. And we organized it around the table of contents of this plan. If you don't have a plan, by the way, I think we have a copy, Shirley, somewhere. If we, yeah, if we don't have it tonight, if you want a copy, we can get you a copy. So, I wanted to give you just a real quick peek at some of the initial findings. And we'll have a report that will probably be out hopefully by the end of this month. We have a lot of work to do yet. I also want to thank a few people, because this is a pretty big undertaking to do. Shirley Johnson and Erica Armstrong, Carol Ziller, all played a big role in helping to make this happen. So, thank you to all of you. So, how many of you got a survey and completed it? I knew it. I figured just about every single person here would have. Thank you for doing that. So, I'm going to kind of go through four minutes or so to preliminary findings. We call it the Conifer 285 Quarter Community Area Plan. That's what the county calls this plan of ours. Who wants to know about us? I mentioned, we really wanted to have input for Jefferson County Plan as they're editing and updating the plan. But, you know, things are changing all the time. Our demographics change. That's one of the things I'm going to show you in a sneak peek here in a few minutes. And this kind of information would be used by a lot of groups. If you're a business and you're, this kind of information would be helpful to you. Or if you run a nonprofit, this will interest you, I think. And we will send the report out to everyone who's on our email list. So, if you aren't on our email list and want to get a report, you might want to get that to us at the end of that. So, Erica put these slides together for me. Thank you Erica. No death by PowerPoint. I always loved the way she crashed ideas. The survey was 42 questions long. We did get feedback from people, disgruntled people, angry people, who said, "What are you doing?" We asked a lot of information, and we really appreciate that most of you went through the whole survey and gave us your input. We had 1,200 respondents. And so, as I mentioned, I'll give you just a few highlights. I'm going to look at my notes, because I was thinking about this and there, I don't want to miss. I had a few useful thoughts, and I don't want to miss them. This gives you an idea of the age distribution. We asked what your ages were. And this is what we found. 54%, the people who filled out the survey are 55 years of age or older, 54%. In Jefferson County, that percentage is 35%. So, one of the things we've learned already is, the folks who filled out our survey tend to be on the older side, like me. And it was one of the issues that we had. We were really trying to get to the younger population in our community. We still want to do that. We may even end up doing another poll or survey of the schools. So, the people who filled this out are people who are in my age category. And then, we looked at gender. And of course, the women beat us again. I think it's pretty much true of surveys that women are the ones who, kind of take a bullet by the horns, are the ones who respond. 60% of the respondents to the survey were women, 39.40% or so men. What's interesting is, in Conifer, according to the census, 49% of the population is women. So, you can see that we're way lower sampled by women. What might that mean in terms of responses, I don't know. How long have you lived in Conifer? I have a note on this. Those of us who've lived here 10 years or longer, 64%. So, 64% of us who've been there 10 years or longer filled out the survey. But there are a lot of people who haven't lived here that long, and we didn't hear from them. And that's another issue for us. We really want to get to those folks who haven't lived in the community long. We want to hear their voice, and we want to know what they're interested in as well. Family status. We tend to be a married community. 85% of people who filled out the survey are married or a couple. And only 15% are single. And I thought work stats was interesting primarily because of the second number. 23% of the people who filled out the survey are retired. And when you, when we look at the survey from four years ago, one of the things we noticed, and this will be in the report, is that the age of us who are filling out the survey and the length of residency are all going up, which kind of says that people come to Conifer and stay. People aren't coming in and leaving. And we have 23% of those who completed this are retired. And that plays out in another couple of questions. In terms of number in the household, they tend to be small households, though. 53% of us, two people, 10% have one person in the household. So, that means 63% of us either are one-person household or two-person household. So, not big families up here. And just a couple more slides, quickly. What do you think are the most pressing issues up here? And this is what people said, what we all said. Fire vulnerability is number one. Out of that 1,200, 700 people selected that amongst others. Preservation of our small-town character and diminishing water supply. Those were the three top items. And in looking at this, we thought, well, fire vulnerability, we do talk about that a lot. We have presentations at our town hall meetings about that. So, we're kind of paying attention. In terms of preserving our small-town character, that's something I think that Conifer Area Council has really been working on a lot, and we continue to do that. And diminishing water supply. I don't, we have had people talk about that, but I don't know how much time and attention we're paying to that. So, that's something we'll be looking into as we analyze the findings. What else could we be doing in that area? And this was really kind of striking to me. We asked people what kinds of housing they think Conifer has. Are there houses of all types, dwellings of all types, enough of those, not enough of those? And those people who said there aren't enough different types of housing, 26.7% said, "We need more senior housing." Now, we don't know exactly what that means. Does that mean assisted living, or does that mean just townhouses are kind of set up nicely for us as we grow older? But it's probably something that, as a council, we'll pay some attention to, figure out what does that mean for us and what can we do to figure out ways to get people to build these kinds of houses here. My wife and I would love to stay in Conifer. I'd love to see a townhouse developed, a really nice townhouse developed. So, as I get older, I only take care of a two-acre yard or something. Alright. And then, finally, what activities could be introduced or improved? And you can see the top three are a community center for indoor activities, hiking trails. And that's going to be, because we are working on hiking trails, we're very active in that. We've entered our second phase of that. And a recreational indoor activities gymnastics fitness. So, number one and three are kind of similar. So, those are the kinds of things that a pretty significant population of us said is important. That's kind of a sneak peek. Hopefully, end of the month, we'll have a report. We'll send it out by email to all of you. And if you want to ask any questions about that, have any other questions, I'll be around afterwards. If you didn't submit it, if you aren't getting our mailings by email, let me know. And I'll get you on the list, and you'll automatically get a report.
Thank you, John. We will have a lot more information about the survey, so stay tuned on that. And the next Conifer 285 Quarter Area Plan Update Meeting, and I think this has already been mentioned, but it's next Thursday, September 25th. It's actually not 6:30 to 8:30, it's 6:30 to 8:30 typo, sorry about that, at the Conifer Community Church. So, anybody that wants to be involved in that Conifer Community Plan Update, very important. One thing at the last meeting, they were trying to do was do a kind of a generalized thing about lighting. Well, what we like up here as far as lighting and what they like in town as far as lighting, two totally different things. So, we, I think, talked them into keeping a section about lighting and, you know, that it should be night sky lighting and things like that. Very important that you come to those meetings and really hear what they have to say and get your voice in. Okay, we have a great hot topic tonight. Global warming and our local climate. And we've got Mike Sednich, our local weather geek, who is going to explain where our local weather is affected by climate, changing climate. So, Mike?
Thank you Shirley. Good evening, everybody. Shirley mentioned we can't have controversial topics, so I'm going to try to present this in a light that is non-controversial, hopefully kind of the facts and stuff like that. Lower left picture, anybody happen to know where that is? Any guesses? Icy place, south of the equator. So, that's picture in Antarctica. And the reason I bring it up is that some of the data I'm going to present to you tonight, some of the ice core data that we use for kind of climate history of our planet comes from Antarctica. So, I thought that was appropriate. And the other one's just a fun shot. My buddy Rip there, that was his first tornado he's ever seen. So, he was very excited about that. Rip, strangely enough, is an ex-Air Force Colonel who is in the Special Forces Branch of the Air Force and has a meteorologist, which is kind of rare. And Rip did some interesting things like halo jumping, which is jumping out of an airplane at 40,000 feet, pulling the chute at about 5,000 feet at night behind enemy lines. So, when people ask me, you know, "I wish I had your job, you know, you could be 50% right and still get paid", and my comment back to them is usually, if I'm bad at 500 in the majors, I make a whole lot of money. So, what I'm going to talk to you tonight about real quickly, I don't have much time. This is a fairly complex topic, but it's really climate and weather. And what is the difference between the two? And really, from a standpoint, weather is that day-to-day stuff that we experience on a daily basis. Do we have to put our coats on today? It's going to rain. We can have thunderstorms, you can have snow. And climate is really the long-term averages of weather for a specific region or the entire planet over a period of time. So, that time can be the record that we've been keeping records for weather observations, which is about 100 to 200 years. Or it can be a much longer period of time, like the history of our planet, you know, four and a half billion years. So, we're going to try to explain what that difference is. The Earth has been through some very dramatic climatic changes in its history. Over that four and a half billion period, the Earth has been completely ice-covered at times, as well as completely free of ice. And so, where do we stand today? What's going on with our climate? And kind of how does that influence our local weather? So, how many understand that we're currently in an ice age right now? How many knew that? Okay, a few. Yeah, so the Earth today is in an ice age. It's called the Coniferic Ice Age. It's been going on for about two and a half million years. We are currently in what's called an interglacial period of that ice age. That means we're in a warm phase of the ice age. So, that's why our climate today is actually quite comfortable for human activity. I mean, we have snow on the poles, we get snow in the mountains, we're warm around the equator. It's actually a pretty nice time to live on this planet. But we've been through some very dramatic changes over this period of the Earth. We've had four major ice ages in the history of the Earth that we kind of know about. And some of them have been where the Earth has been completely ice-covered. And so, that would not be a real good time to kind of exist on this planet. So, the data here I'm going to show you on the top, this is our temperature pattern. And it's been derived again from these ice core samples. So, there's a little bit of controversy how you derive that information. It's using isotopes and different things that they see in the ice cores. And then, they try to correlate that to temperature. But if you notice, you know, 500 and somewhat million years ago, the current time on the right-hand side there, the Earth has been very warm at times and it's been very cold at times. So, you notice where we are in the current time up there, we're actually in a fairly cool period. And that's because we're in an ice age. But we look back, there have been periods where the Earth has been much warmer than we are today and also much cooler. Down below is a list of ice ages that the Earth has been through. Again, the Coniferic Ice Age, that's that present one. And we noticed that these ice ages last generally a couple hundred million years. So, we've been in the current ice age two and a half million years. We probably are going to be in that for a while longer. Some other data. So, this data, again, this is from Antarctica up at the top here. This is the Vostok Center run by the Russians. And the core data, you see, the current time is on the far left, and we go back 450,000 years. And so, this is all during this Coniferic Ice Age. But you'll notice during this period, there have been times where the Earth has been quite warm, and then it cools off quite a bit. So, the warm periods of those interglacial periods I talked about, the cold periods would be your glacial periods. 12,000 years ago was the last glacial period that we know that we had on the Earth. And during that time, the ice sheets came down over North America and were anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 feet thick. So, pretty hard to exist in that thick of an ice period. Now, the hot topic recently is human activity. What has human activity been done, you know, to our planet's climate? Well, if we look over the last 130 years, really the time period that we have a lot of good observations, you'll notice that there's been a warming trend. And so, we take, but you notice the scale. It's also less than a degree Celsius during that time period. But there's definitely been a warming trend. So, why is that? Well, it's really hard to tell if that's natural processes, part of this evolutionary climate change that we have, or has human activity contributed to that warming. And that's a part that we have theories about, but we don't really have any hard evidence. Because it's probably hard to go back in time and see what played into those warming and cooling periods. So, there are other things that influence climate change on the planet. And one of the primary factors is something called Milankovitch Cycles. And Milankovitch was a surgeon scientist that theorized that there are different things in the Earth's orbit, the tilt of the Earth, as well as the wobble in the Earth, that can cause very dramatic climate changes on the Earth. And when all three of these factors kind of are in phase or out of phase, those tend to be periods where we have either a very deep ice age or a very warm period. Right now, we're in a period where they're kind of playing against each other a little bit. And that's why the climate is fairly nice right now. Solar cycles are another thing, the solar radiation that coming in. We know that solar activity varies, and that obviously can vary the heating impact to the Earth. Volcanic eruptions. When there's very large volcanic eruptions, that volcanic ash comes up into the stratosphere. It stays for a very long time, and it can actually cool down the planet quite a bit. Meteor impacts. We know that there have been large meteor impacts on the Earth. And when those occur, they can also cause very large shifts in climate. And last, the one that gets all the kind of notoriety today are greenhouse gases. So, we know when greenhouse gases increase in the Earth's atmosphere, mostly in the troposphere, the lowest part of the atmosphere, it retains a lot of the heat of the Earth. The heat doesn't get to escape, so that tends to warm the planet up. We also know, many, many years ago, through these ice core samples, that there were also high levels of greenhouse gases. So, the Earth has natural processes that create that. And we know also, as humans, we've contributed a great deal to that, especially over the last 100 years. This is kind of what Milankovitch Cycles look like. The Earth has different orbits around the Sun. When it tilts more away from the Sun, it gets cooler. When it tilts forward, different hemispheres. But that's kind of the graphic of what those look like. So, how does climate impact weather? So, we know the current climate, again, is very comfortable. A warmer planet tends to imply that we have more dramatic weather. When you have more energy in the atmosphere because of that heat, warmer oceans, we tend to have more dramatic weather. So, we have more active precipitation cycles and bigger floods. We have more intense drought cycles in different parts. It can lead to more tropical cyclone activity and things like that. When we have a cooler planet, obviously, there's more ice, there's less dramatic weather. It tends to just promote getting cooler and cooler. And that's how the ice ages proceed and the glacial periods stay for a long time. So, what are influences to our weather? We've talked about climate influences, but from a weather standpoint, and this is a thing that we're living on a day-to-day basis, what are the biggest impacts or influences to our current weather? And one of the biggest ones is something called the El Niño Southern Oscillation. And what that is, it's really if sloshing back and forth. If you think of the Pacific Ocean as a big bathtub, there's warm water on one side and cool water on the other. And that warm water sloshes back and forth. When that warm water is in the eastern side of the Pacific, we call that the warm phase or an El Niño phase of the Emso Pattern. When that warm water is on the western side and the cool water is on the eastern side, we call that La Niña, the opposite of that. We also have neutral phases where the temperature patterns are fairly consistent across the Pacific. And the temperature difference is in this half-degree Celsius range. Those are the sea surface temperature anomalies or the deviations from normal. Those are the sea surface temperature anomalies or the deviations from normal. So this is a graphic that shows you the three different phases of Enzo. Up on the top there is our warm phase, that's El Niño. So you notice that red indicates the warmer water. And you notice on the eastern side of that, on the right-hand side of that upper graph, on the low side, is all that warm water. So that's the El Niño phase, that warm water's in the eastern Pacific. The middle graphic is La Niña. So that's the cool water phase in the eastern Pacific. The warm water stays on the western side. And then we have the neutral phase. And that's what we've had the last two seasons here across the United States is a neutral phase. So it just means that the temperature anomalies are near average. So what happens during these different phases? So here's a schematic here. During the warm phase or the El Niño phase, what happens is a jet stream that comes across the Pacific tends to sail a little bit farther south. It can impact central to southern California. And those storms that come across there continue across the desert southwest and impact Colorado. These upper lows that form to our south give eastern Colorado a nice up slope flow. That's when we get our big snowstorm, especially here in the foothills. So in an El Niño pattern, that jet stream tends to sail farther south. That tends to be when eastern Colorado gets quite a bit of snow. So if we look back at past years and records, especially here in the foothills, that's where we have our highest snow seasons. The rest of the country tends to be warmer and drier up in the northern tier states. It tends to be cooler and wetter along the Gulf Coast states. So here's a La Niña, so this is the opposite. What happens here? The jet stream tends to ride farther north in the Pacific and it impacts the Pacific Northwest. So they get quite a bit of rain during the La Niña phase. And you'll notice the jet stream then comes down from the northwest over Colorado. So our mountains get a fair amount of snow during the La Niña phase. So when the, especially the northern mountains and central mountains get quite a bit of snow, on the eastern side of the divide, it tends to stay drier and windy and warmer. So La Niña phases for the foothills and the plains tend to be drier than normal. And we tend to have a lot of our chunuk and gassup winds during that La Niña phase. We also have more cold air outbreaks, especially in the northern part of the United States during that La Niña phase. So this is a graphic here. This goes back to nineteen fifty when we started measuring ocean temperatures in the Pacific. And you notice the cycles, the upper half are the warm phases or La Niña, I'm sorry, El Niño. The bottom half are the colder phases, those are La Niñas. And you notice it's very cyclical. They tend to go back and forth year to year. But you also notice during certain decades that you'll have a predominance of one phase over the other. And that's associated with something called the Pacific Potato Oscillation. So we tend to have more either La Niñas or El Niños during a ten- to twenty-year period than we would season to season. But it just again, kind of goes to the cycles that we run through, not only in our climate, but in our day-to-day weather pattern. So how does Enzo impact the local snowfall? We talked about that. We tend to have higher snowfall here during our El Niño seasons. So on Conifer Mountain, which is up where I live, and there's been somebody keeping records since nineteen ninety-three there, so we have a decent number of years that we have records for. The average of snowfall is about a hundred and seventy-three inches. During a warm phase of Enzo or an El Niño situation, the average of snowfall goes up to two hundred and twenty-six inches. And we've had six of those episodes in a twenty-one-year period. All six of them have had above-average snowfall. So the probability of above-average snowfall when we have an El Niño phase is very high. At least, we haven't seen a year that's had an El Niño where we haven't had above-average snowfall, at least here in the foothills. Now during the converse, during the La Niña phase, the average of snowfall drops to about a hundred and fifty-two inches. So well below average of snowfall. And the neutral phases, which we've had seven of those, we've had eight of the La Niñas, also the average is a hundred and fifty-two inches. So during our neutral and La Niña phases, we tend to have low-average snowfall. So the big question, what's gonna happen this year? So we always can't predict that Enzo very well. We just observe it. We did observational data on the Pacific. And so far this year, there's been a warming phase that's occurring out in the eastern Pacific. So all of the information right now is saying that it's about, it was up as high as eighty-five percent probability, it's down now to about a sixty-five percent probability that we're gonna have an El Niño. And it's gonna be in the kind of weak kind of state. So from zero point five to one degrees above average sea surface temperature. But any El Niño tends to promote above-average snowfall here. So right now, if I were forecast, I would say we'd have above-average snowfall for the coming snow season. And the range up on Conifer Mountain would be somewhere in a hundred and ninety to two hundred and forty inches, assuming that that weak El Niño actually develops. So there's still a chance it won't, then kind of all bets are off. But as we get closer and that El Niño stays there, we think that we'll have above-average snowfall. And you can see the graph down here at the bottom. This is just kind of, the zero is the neutral. Above it is would be El Niño. All of the models are kind of saying that it's likely we're gonna have that El Niño. So I'm gonna be around after the presentations here. If anybody would like to talk about anything weather-related, I'd be more than happy to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, it was very interesting. But everybody's gonna be lighting up to talk to Mike. We are going to have Brian Mosby with the Conifer Library come up for just a couple minutes and talk a little bit about the Conifer Library. Brian.
Thank you. I just was gonna give you some idea of what's coming up. We have ongoing programs at the library. We also have some special programs coming up. But first, I wanted to give a big kudos to the community. Every year, we do a summer reading club. And with Jefferson County, they give us our goals for signups and people who finish the summer reading club, kids, teens, and adults. Through the support of the community and the schools, this year, we were able to surpass both goals by twice as many. Thank you so much. Ongoing programs for kids, we always have our story times and our baby times Saturday mornings. We're gonna try something new also and have an afternoon story time starting with tomorrow at four o'clock. There'll be theme-based, lots of games and songs and lots of fun there, stories as well. We have a great Lego club going on. We typically have about thirty to sixty people right in the library, families working on Legos and projects, lots of fun for all ages. For adults, we do have our book club that meets the last Tuesday each month. Award-winning books, so good discussions going on, some great choices there. If you're interested, I have flyers over on the table. Let's see. Coming up November eighteenth, we have a high-altitude baking program that was popular last time we had it, about a year ago. So lots of good information. If you're new to the area or if you just can't make that bread rise really well, then she's full of information on that. Movies at the library, we have regular movies on Saturday afternoons. There's uptight movies the first Tuesday each month. Halloween coming up, so I'm particularly excited about my list for October. And let's see, November fifteenth is International Games Day at your library. Fun for all ages, great family event. Games promote thinking skills as far as some literacy. So we'll have card games, board games, video games, all sorts of things going on at the library that day. And let's see, coming up in the new year, we're gonna start doing a makerspace program. So if you're unfamiliar with that, I can talk to you about that. But kind of doing some hands-on projects, building some little gadgets and things like that all through the library, we'll be promoting that in the new year. And I'm working with the Evergreen Library right now to bring a local Denver author to the community to do a talk on his experiences in writing and publishing. He's quite a character. So appreciate all the help and support in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Lots of great stuff. Next, we have Jen Anderson, who is the Staunton State Park park manager. And she's going to be telling us, I think, some pretty great news. Jen.
I was so excited when I saw the agenda for tonight because for the very first time, it says "Great News at Staunton State Park." Usually I stand before you and it just says "Staunton State Park Update" and I get the wonderful task of telling you we're not gonna open on time and our budget was cut, we're not gonna build what we wanted to build. But that's all changed. On May eighteenth, twenty thirteen, Staunton State Park opened to the public as Colorado's Forty-Second State Park. So we're almost sixteen months into operating of Staunton State Park. And some of the highlights. The first official year of operation, we met and exceeded the estimated visitation of over a hundred and thirty-three thousand visitors annually. How many of you here contributed to that number? All right, nice. Everybody look around, whoever did not raise their hand, you guys need to come out. The leaves are changing. If you visited us last summer, you probably know that it was a hopping place crawling with lots of people. This summer's visitation definitely toned down a bit. It was much more manageable, a lot less gray hair. And I anticipate that our second year's annual visitation will be slightly lower than our first year's, which is pretty usual in comparison, comparing first and second year of operations for businesses. We have an amazing volunteer crew, if you guys haven't heard me already talk about them. They joined us in two thousand twelve and assisted with preparations for opening. It was a group of fifty-two volunteers that donated over sixteen thousand hours to the park since two thousand twelve. Just recently, we trained a new crew of forty-three new volunteers to join the group. They've hit the ground running, assisting with all sorts of programs and projects in the park. And the staff continues to work hard to meet our visitor needs and our operational needs at the park. We celebrated our first anniversary this year on May eighteenth with a Living History event. The event included education, stories, and activities to share the rich and wonderful history about the park, the Staunton family, and the surrounding community. Our goal is to make this an annual celebration. In addition, our volunteers have built new trail links to improve trail access and flow. We've created a larger dirt horse trailer parking lot to accommodate the equestrian use in the park. And we got to open one hour earlier every day this summer. Our park now opens at seven AM, which was a big request last summer. We presented public programs to educate children and adults about the unique and beautiful resources of the park. Our favorite event this year was the Marmot Fest in July. We had lots of fun activities for the entire family to educate them about the importance of protecting the habitat of the marmots in the park. And we hope to make this an annual event as well. So it's been a great second summer season. We're gearing up for leaf paper season, which probably should start this weekend. But we're not done, and that's what I'm so excited about. We've received funding for our visitor center for Phase Two and the Davis Dams Recreation Project. The visitor center that was planned in Phase One has received funding. With the merger of Parks and Wildlife, the visitor center will include offices for both parks and wildlife staff. It will include a small space for interpretive displays, a retail area, and a multi-purpose room for meetings and education programs. And it will provide many of the services that Colorado Parks and Wildlife offers, such as purchasing parks passes, selling fishing licenses, sorry, and purchasing your hunting licenses. We're really excited about this project moving forward. Seeing the number one question when people drive into the park is, "Where is your visitor center?" And now we'll actually be able to tell them. So we've also received support for the next phase of development, which is Phase Two. It adds a maintenance facility, additional parking, additional trails, restrooms, and some of the infrastructure for camping in Phase Three. We've also received support to complete the Davis Ponds Recreation Project. Last fall, the ponds and dams went on a renovation. The dams needed to be built to meet state standards. And that project hopefully will be completed this fall. It's supposed to be done in May. Our hope then is to be able to construct trails around the ponds, provide fishing piers for access, a picnic area, and restrooms sometime next year. So that area will become the perfect location to spend the day fishing with your family. Another exciting project is the development of the historic Staunton Ranch District. Back in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, we went through the application process to have the original seventeen-hundred-and-twenty acres of the ranch designated in National Register of Historic Places. This was a great accomplishment for the park. As you may know, the designation opens doors for grants to help with the preservation of those buildings and also to tell the story of Staunton. As you can see, there's a lot happening in the park and there's still a lot to do in the future. And before I end, seeing as this meeting is dedicated to Mr. Dan Hemming, I wanted to share with you his contribution to Staunton State Park. Mr. Hemming was a member of the Citizen Group, which was the Master Planning Advisory Committee that assisted with the master planning process for Staunton. We all believe that without his leadership and understanding of this community, the park's relationship with its constituents would not be what it is today. Thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you, Jen. Boy, there's a lot going on around here, isn't there? Okay, what's happening at Peaceworks Inc. and the Mountain Peace Shelter? Janet Schoen is here to spill some rumors and to let you know what's going on.
Hi, I have a, noting that Angela is usually here with the little time sheets in the back, I prepared a video that's exactly five minutes and one second long. So we're gonna run that in the background. But I, and I'm not gonna sit here and tell you what's on the slides. I'm gonna let you read that while I tell you a little bit of a story that I think will give you a really good idea of what Peaceworks is and who we serve. Recently, we had a woman who left the shelter after being there three months with her children. When she came to the shelter, her child had called 911 because he had seen years and years of abuse of his mother by his father and he was tired of it. She came because she wanted to protect her children. She came to the Mountain Peace Shelter and was there for three months. When she first arrived, she, her body literally was drawn in. She looked down at the ground, she was afraid to look up. She was a frightened, battered, dejected woman. That you could see the lines on her face that showed the pain that she had experienced through her life. When she left the shelter three months later, she had gotten a full ride to Greeley, to the University of Greeley, with housing for her family. We were all so excited that in three months, a woman's life could change so dramatically that she could provide a really bright future for her children. So what made that happen? And this isn't running, so I'm gonna run it and hold on. So it wasn't just the people at the shelter that made that happen. It's people like you. What she didn't know when she left and she thanked us over and over again for the changes that were made in her life. What she didn't know is that you all, this community, made that happen. Our client advocates helped her to work through all the issues that she was facing when she first came, or a lot of them. They went with her to court, they helped her to navigate the legal system. They helped her understand that she could get victims' compensation, which allowed her money to, for three months, to pay for counseling for her children, to pay for basic needs. They helped her go to medical doctors, get food stamps, find jobs and information about school. They did job coaching with her and they coached her about applying for school. And they, they were there as advocates for her. So that's what the staff did. But there was a lot of other people involved in making that change for her life. We had volunteers that came in and did financial education. We had volunteers that came and worked on the shelter and helped create a home-like atmosphere where it was safe for people. We had church groups that provided food, clothing, all sorts of things, as well as the food banks. And they worked with us to get funding, or the organization. Right now, we have two churches that are doing fundraisers for us. We have a lot of community groups that are donating products and... We have a lot of community groups that are donating products and services. People are organizations like the Mountain Resource Center, the Echo, the Blue Spruce Habitat for Humanity that we partner with to really try to get resources for these folks. So we have a whole community that's creating a safety net. We have people that donate to us. I want to tell you just right now, we haven't been paid by our granters in eight weeks because the state of Colorado put in a new accounting system. And it was so messed up that none of their granters have been paid for eight weeks, which means none of us, our grantees, have been paid for eight weeks. And we went to the community and said, "We need help. We really have to pay payroll. We have to pay our bills." It costs a lot of money to run a house and to have these kind of programs. And people stepped up. And within two weeks, we've raised $4,000 from people like you who donated on our website. We're so grateful for things like that because I actually could get sleep at night in knowing that I could pay the payroll. That was a really good feeling. So we have people that really care. And what I wanted to tell this woman when she left was, "It's not us, it's this community." And I want to thank you all for that kind of, for being that kind of community and for being the people that make the changes in the lives of the people that we touch. We shelter about 40 women and children every year. And we, and we help people, about 150 people on the crisis hotline who are victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and other relationship crimes. So we work with people that you know. One in four women and one in 14 men are victims. So people that you know are being hurt. One of the things that I really ask is that you refer people who need help more than anything because we want to be able to help those people and show them what a great community this is and that they can have a new life. I do want to tell you real quick about Taste of the Foothills Fall Family Festival. It is our biggest fundraiser of the year. It is on Saturday, October 18th. It's going to be tastings of beer, food, and wine, as well as a lot of really fun family activities. One of the really cool things that we just heard about is that a man is going to bring his, thank you. The man is going to bring his motor, the remote-controlled cars and have a track that you can play with the cars. And then there's cars that are actually digging up to hold people. And so it's going to be really a lot of fun. We're going to have a big auction, lots of fun family entertainment. So come on by. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jen. And now we are going to be talking about Dan Eming's impact on the Conifer community according to the Mountain Resource Center. Mary Alice Cohen, who is Operations Director for the Mountain Resource Center, is going to be talking first. Mary, Alice?
Well, first of all, I'd like to share that I feel so privileged and honored to have known Dan. We worked together at the Mountain Resource Center for about five years. And the impact he made on our community is just so profound and touching. And I'll go ahead and pop this slide show. There we go. So today, I walked around the Resource Center and I talked to volunteers and staff and asked what type of roles that Dan Eming played at our center. It was so interesting to hear the range. It was everything from, well, of course, board member. But he also helped with every special event we had, whether it's our holiday party or empty bowls. You could always see him helping Punky and other volunteers in the food pantry, working with clients, providing food that they might need. He was also in charge of our holiday basket delivery for the whole 285 corridor. And knowing all the roads that he knew so well, he knew where all the families lived. So families that couldn't come to the churches to pick up the holiday baskets, he organized everybody to deliver them to their homes. He also helped organize our resale store. And this was one of the funny things. We asked him, it's kind of hard to see on this annual report, but we asked him to be a model for our annual report. So he just thought that was so funny that we want him to be a model. But when I put that on the, excuse me, on the presentation, I realized he was a model in so many other ways for all of us. He showed us every day how to really give from your heart and how to make a difference in people's lives. He was so humble and so giving and so generous every day. His other job title is joy-sprender. The other thing is when I went around and talked to people today, they also shared different things beyond his title that just made such a difference. I mean, he really supported us every day. He made every one of us, like probably so many of you here in the room, feel really special and really cared for. His joy was infectious. He always had a smile. And we really, what so many of our volunteers and staff said today is we miss his hug and we miss just the joy that he had. And he'll just be in our hearts forever. So I know Dan would want us to share what he was really committed to and making a difference in the community. You'll see our mission here, to provide high-quality, integrated health and human services that improve the lives of people in our community. And that's what Dan was all about. Why do our neighbors need help? Really, life can turn on a dime. So many of you here know that just in a split second, the bomb can fall out. So what we see in our community here is people are coming to us because they've had a medical crisis. Their child broke their arm and they can't, they paid the hospital bill and now they can't pay their rent or their mortgage. Or they've lost their job or they're working at a retail place and they just can't make a living wage up here. Abandonment is a big one. And I know Jen, it sees this all the time too, where a breadwinner of the family just walks out the door and they no longer have a source of income. Or we'll see a teenager who gets kicked out of their grandparents' house who they were residing with and they're abandoned. So this comes in many different shapes in our community. Mental health issues or other expected-like changes. For example, last year, you probably, those of you that have propane, saw the exorbitant increase in the rates. That impacted so many people in our community because they were paying their propane bill and then they didn't have money for food. And so they had to come and access their food pantry. So that's how we see things in our community of life turning on the dime. So how we help, this is just a real snapshot. But when something comes in through our door, they might need help with food or they might need help with rent or they might need help looking for a job. So they could come in through any one of these different categories. And we try to wrap around them and help them with whatever else that they might need. So they, or most commonly, we see the utility assistance, the food, the firewood ministry that we work with our churches with, helping with rent and mortgage. But then, once we get them stabilized, then they might need help with looking at their budget and figuring out how to get out of foreclosure or how they need debt counseling. So we have onsite staff to help with that. A few of you might have taken some of our new computer classes, which are free. We teach Excel and Word and different job searching techniques online. And of course, we have a job fair that we partner with Echo on and different 101 job coaching, as well as family education and health coverage assistance. And back in the back when we leave, we actually have a menu of services now, which is all of our wraparound services for anybody that you know that might be in need of one of these different types of things. And we couldn't do it without our partners. I was laughing about this picture. You have to picture those as mountains. And those men in really comfy shirts, it meant it's our community. But we offer various counseling now, five days a week onsite, different practitioners that are serving clients. Empower, Brian comes and does library story time in our community room. Wink, we have a manner room coming. We have veteran services and more. And then, as Jen mentioned, we couldn't do the work we do without collaborating with Mountain Peace and with Echo and with Habitat for Humanity. We work really closely together to wrap around and support clients with whatever they might need. And how that looks is we work with them to meet their immediate need and stabilize their crisis and then assess their needs and set their long-term goals and then provide ongoing success. One minute, woo! And celebrate their success. So basically, there's four ways that we would love to help bring your food to the food pantry, groceries, fresh produce, and then, of course, donations to our resale store. And then we just set up with donating your car to charities. And then, of course, like Dan, donating your time to make a difference, to help your neighbors in need. So that is everything. Thank you so much for your time and for all you do for our community.
Mary Alice, thank you. It was a great presentation. Susan Eming, Dan's wife, is Vice President of Conifer Area Council Board of Directors. And Dan often helped us with our town hall meetings or with our adoptive highway cleanups. This is Dan right there. Or just in any way that he could. He volunteered a lot of time in his church, Our Lady of the Pines Catholic Church and the Elk Creek Fire Department. And we have Jacob Ware here to talk a little bit about the Elk Creek Fire Department. Jacob?
Good evening, everybody. I was kind of honored when I was asked to come here and talk about Dan and his attack on the fire department. And I'll talk a little bit about what's going on in the fire department. So Dan, as everybody knew and everybody's talked about, he was a very giving person. He joined the fire department in 1979 after Murphy Oldswire. He continued on for 30 years, the Elk Creek Fire Department. And after that, he continued on and he acted retired status. He held position lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, and also the wildland fire coordinator. He was an important part of wildland fire suppression on the corridor for most of his career. I think every fire on the corridor, he was part of the suppression effort on it during his career. He, I met him at Tuckoff Creek when I first joined the fire department. He kind of introduced me to wildland fire. He thought it was my background. He encouraged me. I ended up working for the Forest Service and a number of other things. He was always very helpful. Every single time, he'd always come in. He'd smile, he'd laugh. It didn't really matter what was going on. He always had a joke. He always had some sort of, something fun to say. And no matter how bad things got, he'd always smile. He would give you recommendations on his favorite kind of beer that you should probably try. He was just always helpful. The other thing about Dan was he was the consummate family man. At the fire department, we have a lot of volunteers. We have a little saying, "Family, work, then fire department." And Dan always stuck with that. He would come in and we'd talk about fire stuff, blah, blah, blah. And we'd talk about working in the woods or wildland fire or whatever. He'd always end on a family note. He'd always talk about his kids. Then towards the end of it, we would always end. He'd always tell me, you know, "Take care of my little boy. I've got a little three-year-old." He was, he was always helpful. It didn't matter what was going on. And that was Dan, and we sorely missed. Yeah. What's going on at the fire department right now is through the support of the community, and Dan was a big part of it. We were able to get a milli pass, which I think most of you know. And we've slowly been able to surplus some of our aging equipment. We've got, we bought two new fire engines this year and we're going to have two new water tenders so we can replace our aging water tenders, which are circa, I think, 1988, '89. That's probably the biggest thing we've got. The other thing that's going on right now at the fire department is part of our volunteer membership tribe. We're trying to get people to come out and volunteer as firefighters. So if you or anybody that you know is interested in volunteering as a firefighter at Elk Creek, please, I've got a table over there and I'll be around. It is a big-time commitment. And that was what was so important about Dan. He did it for years and years. Susan, contest to the amount of meals that are missed. Just when you sit down to dinner and the pager goes off in the middle of snowstorms, in the middle of the night. My wife will laugh about that for forever, the amount of things that you miss. But it is very rewarding. We always say it's neighbors helping neighbors. So if anybody that you know is interested in volunteering or you're interested, please come on by and tell you a little bit about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. We lost another very important community volunteer well back. Kate Thielen. Many of you knew her. She was a special friend and a Conifer Area Council Board member. There is now a bench in her memory at Beaver Ranch Community Park in the Celebration Meadow. And this is what it looks like. We would like to also honor Dan Eming, another very extraordinary community volunteer with a memorial bench. So any donations that we get this evening will go to that bench. We will also be asking for more funding later. We might even try to do a sign along with it. So again, all donations tonight will go towards a memorial bench for Dan Eming, an extraordinary community volunteer. So thank you all so much for coming tonight. We've got lots of information around here, lots of people that you can talk to. And then we hope to see you again on November 19th at our next town hall meeting. Thank you so much.